April 12, regular Board of Supervisors session.
Thank you Jake. We will call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCollum?
Here.
Very good, I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
One second. McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Communications, before we get to the Board and Jake's office, we do have one we've received, is a proclamation. I know we have some folks here to speak on that this morning, so if you ladies don't mind coming up to the podium here and identifying yourselves and... I want to make sure I get this right, this is about Child Abuse Awareness Month?
That is correct.
Is that correct ladies? If you just identify yourselves and let us know what the proclamation is about.
I would love to. My name's Ashley Canus, I'm a lifelong resident of Marion County, I grew up over at Pella and currently live over on a farm west of Melcher Dallas. Child abuse, this is Kylie Spees, she's a representative from Child Prevention Iowa, Child Abuse Prevention Iowa. And April is the Child Abuse Prevention Month and we are making a step in making a proclamation against child abuse. So I would actually invite Kylie Spees to speak a little bit about what this is. My name is Kylie Spees, I also grew up in Marion County, same farm west of Melcher that Ashley and her family now live on. I work for Prevent Child Abuse Iowa, we are a statewide organization that does awareness, advocacy and service around preventing child abuse. Like other public health measures, you know, preventing smoking, preventing teen pregnancy, good prevention is invisible. So we don't see all the things that didn't happen. So Child Abuse Prevention Month really acknowledges all the ways that communities can rally around children, the ways that you build those supports for children and families that lead to happy childhoods and when something does happen, there's a community to respond, children have somebody to tell. And I think that that was one of the advantages that I received growing up in this community was that there were a lot, everyone knew my name, they knew my parents, my teachers taught my parents. You know, that's that community that really protects children and rallies around children. We are looking to get a proclamation in all 99 counties this year, I believe we are at 59 as of last Friday. So, and Southern Iowa is killing it, like most of our proclamations are currently in Southern Iowa. So we just want to present this opportunity to you. I also have some data information here for you that I will leave with you, we are a statewide organization, we are happy to be a resource in any way, whether that's data or planning or training outreach, anything that we can offer to you and your community, we are happy to do that. We are always just a phone call away.
Thank you, thank you. Steve, Keisha, any questions for ladies?
I just want to thank you guys for coming out, I know that you had reached out via email and I appreciate that. And I am in support of this, I do think proclamation is good. I also know that a couple departments, I believe it was Public Health and Recorder had also participated in doing some awareness, so I appreciate those departments stepping up and doing that, so.
Very good, ladies, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For coming and describing this. Jake, in order to enter this into the record and have Marion County join, do we need an official motion or do we just accept the proclamation?
I think as you as the Chair could accept the proclamation announcing this as the Preventative Month.
Very good, very good. Steve?
No, I'm in favor of that also.
Okay, very good, very good. Well seeing as we're all in favor of this, ladies, thank you for coming, as Chair I will accept this proclamation and declare Marion County is also joining in on Prevent Child Abuse Month in Iowa. So thank you, and the proclamation will be on our website and you can read it if you desire.
Yep, and I'll get a signed copy to you guys, to these guys as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional communications Jake?
Nothing directly, Missy forwarded an email yesterday I believe that was rounded up regarding the topic of today, but nothing directly to the Board through my office.
Okay, Board, anything?
Yeah, I believe we got the email there regarding Mr. Ryan. Also Gary Powers was thankful for The Rock, so Tyler, I wanted to let you know that, he sent an email. And then also we, probably later on discussion and updates, but Ann Bacon had reached out to us regarding impact, so.
Very good, thank you, thank you Keisha, Steve?
Nope, I had the same emails as Keisha had.
Very good, thank you very much, all right.
You should have had a previous one from another concerning the same agenda I sent out a week ago.
Yes, yes, that's true Missy, thank you very much.
Thanks for the reminder, yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, this is public comments portion of our meeting, public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda, the Board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board Supervisor meetings, are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Seeing none in the room, is there anything online? Very good, we will move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Before I make a motion regarding the consent agenda, I just wanted to make a comment for the public to understand. I was going through our claims yesterday in regards to an audit, we have to do audits yearly. These are quite costly, probably $30,000 plus in our audits and it's very important that we have audits and I'm all supportive of audits. Want the public to know that obviously not everything is free. And when we file this audit, we have to pay $150 to the state. The auditor's office to the state is $150 to file that, so. When things come up and we wonder why things cost so much, that's just a good reminder of one thing, that it does cost us as the county to file our report. So, just want to make that public note.
Well, thank you, thank you. Jake, who does our audit?
Hudson Associates, it's a firm out of Oskaloosa, Iowa.
Okay, very good, so normally when you, do we bid this process out? Or is this something that we've had a longstanding?
We've had a longstanding relationship with them, I do ask for a proposal, anywhere from one to three years from them when the time is up. And it's most generally been under what the state is charging other people and we have excellent service, they help us throughout the year. They help us with the accrual work, they answer our questions, Michaela and I email them, recall them quite frequently throughout the year, so. It is a somewhat of a proposal process, but we have had a long relationship with them for a long time, so.
Very good, thank you, appreciate the comments, all right, very good. Is there a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
All right, very good. On to business, first item, actually one and two are related, but we have to do one before we can do two. So we have to untable an agenda item from our February 22 meeting and it's regarding Marion County Ordinance 2022-1. We are on the second reading of that proposed ordinance. So before we get to item two, we have to do item one, which is have a motion to untable it.
I knew that we untable agenda item concerning ordinance, the rezoning ordinance?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in support to untable this agenda item, Jake?
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye, very good, thank you. So now we can do item number two, which is a discussion around said proposed ordinance. Missy, if you kind of give us a little background, where are we and what are we doing today?
So we, you are hearing the, or doing the second reading. Since the first reading and the public hearing, there have been some amendments or additional conditions that were added to the petition. Some of the proposed are, obviously we're still moving forward with the screening, that's 150 by 100 feet in the decommissioning area to close that off from the neighboring properties. The Board of Adjustments will hear the final, make the final decision on the screening of the containment area. The proposal right now would be all open areas have to have screening and they are asking for variance on the areas with dense tree population. One of the biggest changes since the first reading to now is that there will be required to be a survey done of the rezone area with that rezone area properly defined with large corner posts, bright orange on top so they can be easily identified to make sure that everything stays within that rezone area. And one of the bigger changes is that the, there's a 100-foot buffer from the neighboring property to the south. So it will not go clear up to the south property line, there's a 100-foot buffer to keep it on the Linger property and surrounded by the Linger property. The other conditions, a couple that were added is there was, once the survey's done, which surveying does take a little time, so none of us can predict how long that's going to take, getting the survey right now is kind of difficult, maybe shorted the surveyors. But once that's done, there will be a set timeframe of 30 days that the, if this is approved, that the petitioner will have to get everything to the rezone area and get the screening up as defined by the Board of Adjustments.
So the buffer on the south, Missy, that basically puts it on the north side of that tree line so they can?
Correct, the only, and like in talking with Lingers yesterday, that's why having the survey is going to, it's easy to look at this picture and you think you know what you're talking, know what it says, but this open area, there would be screening and that would keep it from migrating, obviously this tree line is about 250 foot deep. But that open area on all the sides would need to be defined by whatever the Board of Adjustments determine the fence needs to be and to make sure that it stays within the containment area.
Ed, are you on? I can't, oh there it is, up at the top.
Yes, Mark, what can I do for you?
Ed, if you could just outline, so as, when this takes effect, what our remedies are as a Board if there's non-compliance?
We have ordinance violations that are set up versus defense not exceed $750, $1,000 each subsequent offense.
Very good, thank you. So once this is established, assuming we get through the third reading, which this is only the second reading, there will be enforcement provisions if the rezoning, if approved, is violated to that effect. So there is a legal process we have to follow, both in terms of establishing this and then in terms of enforcement of those provisions. And we will intend to enforce those, so. Hold it, hold it Jack, wait, Missy, is there anything else? You've got the outline of the changes, so Board you can see it on the cover sheet to the agenda item, those are the summary of the changes. Is there anything else that we need to know for the second reading?
No, I mean, I've outlined pretty much all that we had discussed and the changes, like you said, the biggest changes are that we are now requiring a survey to clearly define the area, so that'll make it easier for enforcement to know exactly where those lines are at. And to move it 100 feet off of the south property line, so there is a buffer between the Linger, the rezone area and the neighboring property.
Very good.
And Mr. Linger is aware of all these changes?
Correct, and yep, Amy's here, I've had numerous discussions with Ben and Amy, met with them yesterday. So, yeah, we've had numerous discussions about compliance and once, you know, if this is approved, what that means, that it's got to stay within that containment area. And the screening will have to be determined if it lands approved.
Very good, thank you. Jack?
Does this cut that property in half?
No, it does not cut it in half, it cuts it by 100 feet, so instead of being 15 acres, a rough estimate, you know, without a survey, I don't have a totally accurate estimate, it's about 14 acres, but when you take that 100 foot by whatever, 600 and something feet.
If the, I just would like to make a suggestion, if it would help any, probably not, but if that design that you have there was running parallel with the 80 acres out there, would that help screen, you wouldn't have to have so much screening?
I'm not following.
Well, just turn that to the right, what you have blocked off there, so instead of it, you're coming over the pond.
The reason that was done, the reason this is done the way it is, is because it stays behind Linger's property, it's not behind anybody else's property. Again, that was meant to be a buffer and in the discussion I had with Amy and Ben, we did that so that it is not behind anybody else's property. That's why it's laid out that way. That also I can address is why another's been discussion as to why the access road from here to the containment is not actually part of the rezoning and that the reason was is because we want to not have it directly rezoned behind the neighboring properties.
Right, very good, thank you, appreciate the comment though Jack, thank you.
Well, I have another question, I have another question. Ben, is there going to be a lot of?
Jack, you've got to keep that mic in front of you, but it's all right.
Is the, is the traffic coming in across the pond and back out onto the highway? Is there going to be any signs that says caution, heavy traffic ahead, so that you don't have a semi pulling out? You've got a semi going down the road?
That will, that's not, that hasn't been part of our discussions at all.
I can add to the comment.
From a zoning standpoint, that's not part of this discussion.
Both zoning and Tyler's is required is that they have to pave within the right of way so that we don't have mud drug out onto the road. I know there's a lot of existing, you know, pre that change in the ordinance that are not paved, but this will be required if it's rezoned to pave within the right of way to try and contain the gravel on to, you know, from, and not have mud, as much mud and gravel drug out onto Highway 215.
And Tyler, are there any other safety concerns we need to be aware of?
No, we've reviewed this entrance for the industrial rezoning and as Missy said, we've worked with Lingers for permitting the driveway and their contractor that will be paving the driveway. There was some discrepancy in the right of way width there, we're erring on the side of caution and going with the lesser of the two, which is still approximately 50 feet of right of way. So there'll be a substantial paved apron there leading out onto the highway, which we have received a few comments on. And, but no, no other safety issues, we checked for this type of entrance and I have reviewed the paving, so we're good to go.
Okay, very good, thank you. Very good, Missy, anything else?
No.
Okay, Jack, thank you for your time. Well, Jack, we got to, we got to close discussion sometime, so one more, hold on, hold on, one more, one more.
I don't know why, I'm listening here.
Wow.
You're not listening.
Well, what are we supposed to listen to, Jack?
It says in the state of Iowa that you cannot run, you cannot run four-wheelers, snowmobiles, anything else up and down the highway and the ditch. That's the state of Iowa.
Right.
I talked to the sheriff and he said he'd get back to me and he acted like he didn't know anything about it. Well, he had a 45-minute show on TV here a couple weeks ago explaining about the farmers getting ready for the fields and everything to be cautioned. And they brought up a 15-minute segment saying that nobody in the state of Iowa can turn around and run four-wheelers, snowmobiles, three-wheelers up and down the ditch and you can't unless you've got a license.
Well, Jack, can I stop for a second? And we want to listen, but this is a zoning question, okay, which is a different issue.
It doesn't make any difference about my property, I'm on the leave, you're not going to do anything, you've already made up your mind.
All right, we've listened. This is a zoning question. Those are other questions, you said you went to the sheriff.
Right.
All right, we have to get that information, we don't have any of that, that's a different topic.
Good luck man.
Sir?
Yes, my name is Zach Grandry, landowner to the south here on this rezoning. My main concern with this is that this seems to be well-isolated and away from all other property lines except for mine. Now, they have backed it back 100 feet, but I feel like that's still unacceptable. We're requesting at least 250 feet and I am happy to see that there is now the proposed screening on the south end there. But I would like to request a planted screening of conifers and trees instead of a fence. My family has worked for generations to maintain our property, to keep the beauty, as you do with the responsibility of the landowner. And all that is being addressed now with this new proposal. And I'm not trying to prevent Linger from continuing and to grow his operation, I believe he has the right to do so, I'm just trying to preserve the work that my family has done and will continue to do in the future.
So to, I guess, answer your question Zach, is that, so that's something you would prefer versus a fence? You would prefer trees as a barrier to be planted on the line instead of a fence, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct and we're, we understand it's going to take years to grow up and to develop and it won't be immediate, but it will provide, you know, with the, with conifers, pine trees or spruce, it will offer a year-long barrier and then it'll also maintain and preserve some of the habitat that's being destroyed.
Does, Missy, so would a change like that cause an issue with any of the other landowners who want to screen?
I mean, so Ben and I have to yet work, and this is if this is approved, Ben and Amy. I would still recommend, this is going to be my recommendation, that there be a normal, I'm going to call it livestock fence and then the row of trees, just so as Ben and I talked and Amy talked yesterday, maybe it's not Ben, but it's some of his workers don't, you know, that imaginary line in that open screen area to allow them to just put a normal fence which holds containment and then trees on the backside of that so that you don't see that fence. If that's acceptable, that's something when it goes to the Board of Adjustments can be, can certainly be recommended. I mean, if that makes it more workable for the neighbors.
So if, Ben, are you good with that kind of a request?
Yeah.
Can, they'll make it work for your business and doesn't put?
Doesn't interfere with anything.
Okay.
So where we would need the six-foot screening obviously would be on the west side in the open area and then again on that northwest corner in the decommissioning area. I know yesterday we had discussion, this proposed open area Ben and Amy were talking about as we talked, I'm going to call it animal fence because they own the 10 acres to the west of it, but that keeps anything from migrating out into the unzoned area. So that's definitely something we can work on.
So to get your, to get this change in here, before we get to the third reading, Missy, let's make sure we've got that listed in here.
Do you want that listed in there or is that more for the Board of Adjustments?
Well, I think it's for the Board of Adjustment, but in order to approve it for the third reading, we just want to make sure everything's updated here. On the conditions, so we want to make sure that that's in there too, okay? Very good, thank you, thank you. Very good.
I have a question.
Yeah, Steve.
The physical structure of this barrier fence, how is it established, is it as a DNR rule or, I mean?
Yeah, so I'm actually working on an old, I'm going to call it grandfathered-in, suppose a junkyard, but the DNR sets the regulations as to the fencing requirements of the six-foot tall, not less than 15% open space.
It's also the DOT.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess it was actually the DOT because the one I'm working on, on Highway 5, it's the DOT that has a requirement. So that's where the fencing requirement comes from.
Well, my point being that we've already agreed to this fencing thing and Ben sounds to me like he's going to go above and beyond that. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
And it certainly is something that if the Board of Supervisors set what the fencing requirement's going to be, then it would not have to go to the Board of Adjustments, the Board of Adjustments does however have to hear the change with 1558, so.
So, and Steve, I think you make a good point. We just want to make sure we get all the land, we've received a lot of emails from landowners, it's 250-foot setback and those things. As long as we can come to some kind of agreement where that works for both parties and you can run this through the Board of Adjustments and then get us the final conditions for the third reading, I think we're good, right?
No, it has to go to the, we have to do the final reading and then it has to go to the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, whatever that, I'm talking about the parties Keisha, I just want to make sure everybody that's impacted by the zoning piece, because we're dealing with zoning here, everybody's signed off on that.
Okay.
So that's what we need for that third reading.
So I just want to be clear, we're not changing the south, we're leaving it at 100 feet though, correct, or we?
Where do you want you to?
I don't know, we're 100 and 200.
We're going to have you use the mic.
I haven't walked off 100 or 250 foot to see where it would be, I just, looking at this, obviously, it's just, but being on the ground is a totally different perspective.
My guess is 250 feet is going to be more what we had talked about before is clear up in here.
Okay, so before we do anything, I think you're going to have to take that into consideration and see if that's viable for your business. Before saying I can do this.
I mean, I'm good with putting up spruces and evergreens and.
I think the barrier's not the issue, the issue's the setback.
Correct.
Right? So in fairness, you got to take a look at that.
So did you mark off 100 with a map, did you go 100 foot up, or is that?
That's 100 foot up.
It is?
That's what, yeah, when we had talked, that is.
Is that something that the three of us need to get together on and actually go back and?
I kind of think, I kind of think it is, I think that's something that, we're not going to resolve that by looking at a map.
No, I think instead of throwing numbers out, you know, you guys need to get out on the ground and look what's going to be feasible.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, so let's do that and then we can decide whether we want to table the second reading again.
I mean, you may only have to move it 50 feet to make it work for everybody, you know what I'm saying?
So I think, I think, yeah, Steve, you're exactly right, I think let's, based on that request or get everybody together, make sure you walk it off, Ben, make sure you can do this, make sure it works, you can talk about it, Missy, you guys can coordinate that piece.
I mean, we have two different proposals and honestly, it may be something that there has to be a compromise in the middle.
There might be, but at least, but at least you can see it.
You know, it may be, it's at 100 foot right now, maybe it moves up to, I don't know, I mean, it's going to have to be, there may have to be a compromise. So like I said, this is about what the 200.
If Ben's willing to grow trees and a fence, I don't see where the number, I wouldn't get hung up on footage, numbers. I'd see where it works, where it's going to work the best physically on the ground.
Right, so try to do that, we'll table this again, we're going to table the second reading again. So that you can go through this process, we can get a revised list of conditions, once you've done this, I think that's fair. We don't, like we've said in prior meetings, we want the business to be able to operate and it's got to be something that is workable for the business owner, but it's got to be workable for the neighboring landowners as well, so.
I have one question before we go. And regarding, Missy, the survey, and we know that surveys could take, you know, months at this point because there's so many. So what happens if there was an agreement that was passed and regarding the survey and then it takes longer, how do we, I mean, how does that work? And maybe that's a legal counsel question, if.
I think once it is, I mean, obviously if we're going to, you know, go out there and look at, we're going to have a rough idea of where the line's going to be. um, they would, I would suggest to use a board that they start moving stuff to that middle containment area, as we talked about, and once the rezonings pass, obviously, no fence, no screening's gonna be put up until there is a survey done, which can take, in, in the heat of the summer, two to three months to get, so, um.
Let me ask you this, is there, is there an established south fence line there that everybody is?
There is off of the, of Billy Walls.
Is, is everybody agreeable that is the actual property line? Okay, step it off, see what it looks like.
Okay? So we'll table this, get together, and come back again. With new conditions, or a revised set of conditions, alright? Is there a motion to table this until subsequent meeting?
I make motion to, um, table Mary County Coordinates twenty twenty-two dash one.
Second. McCombs?
Aye.
Rami?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Very good, thank you, thank you for your comments and patience, I realize this is a difficult topic for everybody, so thank you.
Thank you.
And as far as, as far as the other comments on the writing, I, I have nothing on that.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, we, if that's an issue, we gotta get something on that, 'cause I have absolutely nothing on that. We can't just act arbitrarily, so. Very good, onto item number three, which is Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-nine. Rise grants, Tyler.
Yes, so as part of this agenda item, I sent a lot of information, um, but the main point of today would be to your review and approval of the rise grant application for LDJ Manufacturing and the proposed traffic safety improvements along Highway one sixty-three near Ollie. As part of that grant, we would need a, a signed resolution from the Board of Supervisors, a letter of support assuring the, the funds for, as detailed, um, for the local match portion of the project. And, um, everything else that I sent you was just in support or for future information about how the project would, would, may transpire, again, this is all, uh, subject to your approval. So as part of that, uh, we had a contract, as part of our last discussion regarding this project, I contacted Garden and Associates for the engineering and construction services, uh, portion, so this would be the design of this project, and them seeing it through to, through construction and final completion. Uh, I have included that contract, that draft contract for your review, also because a portion of, of their engineering services could be reimbursed as part of the project. And I say a portion because it's up to fifteen percent of the total project cost, however, their estimate was greater than that. So I don't know if you noticed that change. Uh, so in this particular instance, based on the estimate of the project, and, and which was a comparison from the recent turn lane construction, um, at, nah, I don't know the road name, but it's at the E Free Church about a, a couple miles away, and then also the most recent estimate from Plotonville for their turn lanes at Hayes Drive and Highway Five. So I, that's how I compiled the estimate for the project, and so the resulting impact for the county would be not only the twenty percent match that's required, but the difference, which is about sixteen thousand seven fifty, from the fifteen percent to the actual cost of construction services uh, estimated by Garden and Associates. So, um, in the grant application, you'll see a, a table showing the the twenty percent and the additional engineering as a separate line item within the application. So today, if, if you approve the grant application, that would mean, uh, that we would make application on behalf of LDJ Manufacturing as the county. That does not mean the grant is approved, uh, upon approval of the grant, there would be a funding agreement, similar to what you see when we do a, a federal aid project, or a traffic safety improvement projects, we have a funding agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation. That would be similar. Then I provided two example documents, a, an agreement between the county and LDJ for the project, uh, to proceed, and then also a draft, for example, contract between the county and LDJ that is up to your discretion. Both of those documents and the funding agreement would come at a later date and would be subject to your approvals at those times, and could be amended in the meantime, and I've communicated that with Kisha and, uh, with LDJ up to this point. So I think I've covered everything I had, have you have any questions on any of that information I sent you, or the grant application? Uh, I believe the total county share was in the range of seventy-two thousand, something like that.
Seventy-two five.
With the additional of the engineering fees, and I do wanna thank LDJ for their help on this, there was a lot of back and forth, uh, getting this application complete, and I was super busy at the time, so I do appreciate their help, and Carla's as well, she was very helpful.
Yeah, Carla with the study, yep, yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Steve, any questions?
You say it's seventy-two five total, or the other fifteen?
So, the cost of the non, the non-rise funded project to the county could be seventy-two five. In the, uh, draft agreement, uh, when Tyler and I and then Lauren spoke, um, we had put that the company agrees to pay fifty percent of the remaining cost. Now, that would be a discretion upon us as a board, whether we want them to pay, um, fifty percent, or we want to do one hundred percent of that. The difficulty, um, I see with this is it's on one sixty-three, we, the economic growth, we know that, um, and the rise grant cannot happen without the county involvement, so, um, I had just preliminary told Tyler to put in, um, that LDJ would do fifty percent, but again, I did not want to, I wanted you guys to have time to discuss, so. That's where we come with that, again, like Tyler had, had spoke, we have to apply, um, we have to be accept, I mean, they are in favor, but again, the DOT is not going to put anything in writing for sure, um, they've told us that this is very favorable, but, uh, we have to apply first.
Yeah, uh, I followed up with the DOT since sending you the agenda packet, and their intent upon, so they get asked during the grant application review, if they support the project, their intent is, that, or they are stating they are very supportive of the project, and their intent would be to maintain this infrastructure upon substantial completion to the standards and specifications of the Iowa DOT, which is how we had Garden and Associates write the contract to construct and design and construct, and as they do for anything else within the DOT right away, so they would maintain it in their right of way, I do not have that in writing, however.
And we, if we submit, is it this week that we submit, and then it, um, we would know in May, is that correct?
Yeah, it sounds like they hold meetings on as needed basis, so when they receive grants, then they would meet up to monthly. Uh, so submit now, we've already passed the April meeting, uh, commission deadline, so this would be, uh, on
In May, I believe, yeah.
For review, and I believe the turnaround is fairly quick, is the way it was stated to me.
Yes.
So, and I don't know, Lauren, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I have received verbal commitment from Bob and Hector
Hang on just a second.
To the DOT people, that.
We gotta have you speak into the mic, Lauren, those that are online.
I thought my big old voice.
It's okay.
I have received verbal commitment from Bob and Hector to, Bob is head of the Southeast District Five DOT, uh, who actually takes care of our highway now, and Hector is also, uh, with him, um, that they would maintain, do the snow and everything, because that, that's just normal for them if this was added. But that's only verbal, so I just wanna point that out and add to what Tyler's saying, so. So I assume that that's what they intended all along, they've been very positive about doing this, 'cause they're, uh, very tired of coming and putting rock on the crossover and different things.
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming this is total maintenance, Tyler, not just snow removal and?
Payment, yeah.
Okay.
The, yeah, the rise grant states that there's a commitment of twenty years uh, of the infrastructure once completed. And, and that's how I presented it to the DOT, looking for something in writing from them, but I haven't got that.
The only thing that I, concerns me would be like the callback on this grant and the cost of the, of the infrastructure, if, if for some unforeseen reason, the jobs don't come to fruition, or whatever.
So as part of the agreement document, the example agreement, uh, there were some provisions in there about callbacks or default, I think is what it stated.
Yes, we're, we're required to have a contract with the county that if we do not fulfill, uh, the jobs and, uh, some of the other qualifications, that we will be responsible for those funds, uh, to repay the county, that is in the contract.
Okay.
So that is where LDJ, uh, manufacturing responsibility comes, is they need to make sure, uh, they get the building up, and they get the sales, and they keep the company growing, so.
And my understanding is that it is not, it's a prorated callback provision, so it wouldn't necessarily be one hundred percent of the project cost. I have asked for over a year now, probably a year and a half when we talked about this project last, what that really means, and I cannot find it in Iowa code, and I can, I have never gotten an answer on what that prorated.
I know, that's, that's where I'm at.
So I don't know if that would be part of the funding agreement from them, because I have not seen an example of funding agreement uh, for this type of project, let's put it that way. Uh, Plotonville's is a different type of rise grant, theirs is an economic development, where this is an immediate opportunity right away.
Right.
So Tyler, is it, is it common in these agreements to put in hard numbers when you're really just a floating percentage?
In.
So like we were saying, we're gonna do twenty percent of the total estimated cost, plus any additional engineering up to fifteen, the current estimate is seventy-two five, the rise grant will reimburse us twenty, two hundred twenty-two, or two hundred twenty-five thousand. Do, do we know those, I mean, is it two twenty-five, that's just an estimate?
It's an estimate, those agreements would be, would come at a later date, so the agreement.
So really what we're agreeing to is the twenty-two and fifteen, or the twenty and fifteen? Our portion.
The twenty and greater than fifteen.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what we're.
Twenty percent of the project cost, which could be, you know, less or more based on bid date.
Right.
Bid date.
So the estimates really are, I mean, were close, maybe.
Yeah.
And they require us to put, I mean, when you did this, I mean, they require you to put all this in, 'cause this is part of the application.
In the application, I believe Mark was talking to the agreement.
I'm talking about the agreement.
Oh, okay, alright.
And again, the agreement is just a, the agreement and contract are just examples I got from another county for a similar type of project that are completely subject to change, you, you don't even have to do those in, in that manner.
Yeah.
So, these are just examples, I thought they were a good example, uh, Kisha and I kind of agreed that we would present those today so we knew the direction, uh, the potential direction, uh, and what may come of after a grant is afforded. But really, today is the, about the review and approval of the grant application.
Right.
Um, and again, once we get the funding agreement, then those documents are gonna be modified further, or maybe there's language in those that is, is subject to bid date.
The grant application's kind of time-sensitive right now, right?
Uh, for their schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have any issues with the grant application, I think you just potentially tighten up all the agreements surrounding that, so.
And I have not done anything with Garden and Associates, other than, we had a initial estimate, I think, when I came to you last, about, uh, their services for the project, now we have a formal contract, so upon uh, award of funds, you can proceed with that, or you can proceed with that at an earlier date contingent of honor award, or something like that. So again, that's subject to your discretion.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, I don't see, I'm, I'm not hearing any issues here, so this is a, this is a resolution really to endorse going forward with the grant application.
Yeah, the resolution, and then, uh, Mark, there's a letter of support with your signature assuring that there are funds to provide at least the twenty percent.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or up to twenty percent, at least.
Yeah, Jake likes those kind of ones. Alright, very good, is there a motion on Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine?
Yes, I'll make, uh, motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Jake.
Rami?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, Tyler, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, thank you, Tyler, for all your work on that too, I know it's been, uh, a lot of time, so thank you.
Alright, next we have a discussion item, uh, special event permit for Girls' Night Out, is there anybody here to speak on that?
Kevin is online.
Kevin?
Yeah, so, uh, thanks for your time, we, uh, had our event last year around the same time, we're trying to get me ahead of it. Uh, just wanna make sure our, uh, either box or head of the body store events not be so, clearly we have to restrict. Uh, last year, we, uh, we had about twenty-five vendors on the east side of the square, closed that off, uh, and had about a thousand, uh, just women and, and give the people a chance, so it's gonna be a successful event for our first year. I'm looking forward to something, uh, that's even bigger this year and even better, I know that a lot of the local businesses had a an uptick in, in their sales as well, it may be that. Uh, so what we're just asking for is, uh, set aside, if you can, if you're in range, um, you know, sorry, I said the east side, I meant the west side, excuse me, east side, what if you have the, the four five, you know, the west side of the square? Um, and you're asking for the base thing, as well as the parking lot, Ian.
Very good, thanks, Kevin, Chris, any issues with any of that?
Personally, no issues on it, and I thought it was a great event last year, again, moving forward, we need to ensure uh, alleyway access to the parking lot.
They say, what date is, what is the sixth?
Yeah, what, Kevin, what is the sixth, I didn't look it up on the calendar, what day of the week?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Pretty big, I.
Yeah, so, um, if we're, have early set up.
They're imploding this problem of access to the.
Last year, it worked flawlessly, we left, uh, center access open across the street, that way people could exit and enter the courthouse parking lot uh, via the alleyway. I still have no issues with that, we'll need to make sure that happens. Um, within reason, I, I think the only hangup's gonna be is, and I don't even think it's a major hangup, certainly for an event of this magnitude, we can certainly vacate the north side of the parking lot for one day. Um, I don't think that's a big deal for anyone, I mean, I see one of the guys that parks on the north side of the parking lot shaking his head up and down, yes. So, uh, I, I don't think that's an issue that we have to worry about maybe the north side of the parking lot, the access is important. Um, I still would ask that we continue to make sure that center alleyway, at least on the south parking lot, we do have access to the alleyway. Uh, I think that's an imperative.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Mark, just to piggyback on that, this is Ed, uh, fully support the event, just be mindful that Thursday is our court service day for criminal court, which means there's a potential for moving inmates in and out, uh, and so it's just essential that that south portion that, that, I think Deputy Caius is there, uh, that we have the ability to get in and out with inmates on into that parking lot if necessary on a Thursday.
Okay, very good, thanks, Ed, we'll make sure that that is open. Very, appreciate that. Very, thank you, uh, is there a motion on this item?
Yeah, I make motion to approve, uh, the special event for the Knoxville Hospital and Clinics Girls' Night Out.
Second. John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Rami?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Alright, we have a license renewal, Class C liquor license, uh, including outdoor service, Sunday sales and catering, KLN Entertainment, doing businesses Slideways.
I don't, I don't know if anybody's on or not, this is an annual renewal for their, um, liquor license out at Slideways and their events out there. They've fulfilled everything administratively, uh, for us, I believe that Sheriff Sam Holt had indicated he didn't have any issues with it. Um, other than that, I. Um other than that, I it's a renewal of what they've been doing in the past, so.
Yeah, yeah. Jason sent a note saying he was supportive of it. He, yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, did um somebody from environmental health say something about Kim regarding parking?
Sand, sand filter.
Yeah, parking over the sand filter.
Oh, yeah, they can't, they can't park over the sand filter.
But I'm sure I'm sure they've been through this process before and what they park out there, but.
I, you know, that, you know, probably went to Bridget and those were Cameron and everyone didn't say we could do that.
Well, Cam, I I believe it was Cameron that sent us an email response. That's would be his only concern. Just making sure that, you know, they're not parking on the sand filter.
Okay. Just will make sure of that. Is there a motion on this?
I'm moving to approve the renewal.
I'll second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Remy.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Resolution twenty twenty two dash forty two, this is a resolution designating state and local fiscal recovery funds as lost revenue.
Yeah, I don't know where we, do you want to talk about this or or I do? This is kind of a um procedural process here regarding our ARPA funds uh that uh several counties are doing as well as as us to consider. Um after the final rule came down from the federal government, um it was determined that any entity receiving ten million or less could consider uh all of what they received to be lost revenue and not have to use a calculation or any of those other uh processes. If that makes sense. Um and so we will have our first financial report due at the end of this month. And I believe there's a checkbox we need to indicate if we're claiming that or not. So this is why it's coming to you at this meeting. Um there's one more meeting before the report is due. Is on our task uh this week to start working on that report and see what it all involves. So you have guidance um on the on the screen that is actually believed from Naco through ISAC or ISAC through Naco, one of those two.
Yeah, Naco through ISAC.
I believe it is a good thing for Marion County to consider this, all this revenue loss because it allows it to be used for general county services. That's a nutshell.
Yeah, no one talking to Jamie uh through ISAC. Um this is what uh most counties are doing that have ten million or under, and I think a lot of it is um I think the federal government, once they realized and they pushed this money out, they said, oh, now all the auditing and everything that's going on, these counties that have smaller portions, um they can do this. It's one time, that's it. You can't. Um so if we only wanted to do uh the portion that's coming in May, what is that, like three point two million? We want to do that, but you know, this is an only one time action.
Well, if we do this, Jake, does that then abrogate your need to do any auditing on the stuff we've already approved?
Um I would assume we we will need to report all of that. I'm assuming we still need to report all of our expenses. It's just a to the to um, again, we haven't actually had to complete one of these yet, one of these um financial reports. Um we are tracking each project separately um now. I'm assuming we will still have to uh list them and I would probably and keep them for our own audit purposes and testing of that nature. Um I believe the intent is to make this easier on these smaller governments, but I don't know the level of detail that they're gonna require at this point.
So we can use the other dollars without having to go through a process and how we're still gonna have to decide how we're going to allocate the dollars.
Yeah, I I.
It doesn't change that at all.
I don't think it really, this is just my opinion, that it would change how you guys are proceeding on what you're using. I think it's good for all of us to know where resolutions on how you want to spend the money. I don't know that that would stop.
Right.
Or should. I mean, I think this is kind of a separate uh part of the check, part of the federal process that we're have to report on those types of things and usage, but yeah. You guys um passing the resolutions and um designating the how you want to use the ARPA money is a is a positive and good for all of us to know. So I don't know that that would change if that's kind of two separate, two separate things in my, down the same path, but maybe different lanes. It's my.
Nice draft.
It helps us to know where we're headed.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions on this? If ISAC says it, it must be what we should do.
There's probably a few questions, but I think it's, I think it's the approach.
Even though we didn't have ten million dollars of revenue loss, but hey, whatever.
All right. Steve? No, I think I think it it seems like a logical thing to do.
What? No, come on.
I also hope that it it helps if 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 this would pass, it would help you with the process and which, you know, when you're doing, I mean, it'd be interesting to know how that goes.
Well, you're still gonna track expenses.
We're absolutely.
He's gonna do it, yeah.
It's not gonna change anything that you have to do from an audit standpoint because you're still gonna be tracking everything.
We still need everybody to turn in receipts. Chris is.
Yeah.
Right. I'm thinking more on the federal level when you have to do, um when you have to submit this accounting.
So we're gonna find out.
All right, well, you tell what I feel about this stuff. But anyway, anybody want to approve this thing?
Yeah, I'll make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash forty two.
Second.
Remy.
Yeah, okay.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Then we'll have another resolution approving that resolution of the funds that we received from the federal government on that resolution. LEC security upgrade. Now somebody wants funds. Do we have to get a resolution for that, too?
Well, eventually.
Okay.
It helps.
I thought we just designated it all as lost revenue so we can do what we want.
Well, you can.
Oh, I'm confused.
Well, it helps us to know.
Welcome to the government, sir.
And we're here to help, right? What do we got here?
Mine's pretty simple. Uh Sedapic, those are the folks that were already approved to redo our doors. Uh I got a quote from them to do cameras as well, and I sent that to you guys. That came in at uh ninety seven thousand six hundred twenty six dollars and forty cents. Um this on there what that is for, and then I also sent you um to repair our isolation cell, which is commonly referred to as a padded room. We need most likely the medium maintenance kit for that. Um and then we're gonna also look, talk to maintenance about preventing people from picking up the floors in the future, which is what's causing that damage. So I'd like you to entertain uh this money. It'd be a one time expenditure. I don't feel that going to the taxpayers and asking for this money um would be the best use. I think the the funds that I'm asking for would be a better funding source for it. Uh currently in our jail, I can just give you an example. Sunday I got called out for assault inside the jail and they know where our cameras are and they know what our cameras can't see, and this was in an area where the cameras can't see. So there are several areas like this. Um it really wasn't an issue at the time that we got our current cameras in because we weren't hurting holding contract inmates, and now we're holding contract inmates at a rate of about two to one. So for every one Marion County inmate that we're holding, we're holding two other ones for outside agencies, which is certainly, you know, generates funds for the county and everything, but there are other problems that come with that, and I think having cameras um of this quality and of this amount would would help us out with that. Also, I spoke to our vendors that installed our previous cameras. Um they don't even put the cameras that they put in five years ago uh in the main cells in there anymore due to them breaking down. And when they break down, they make a a loud noise. Uh also, we're having some problems with the audio recordings in there and they've been working on that for the past ten days to try and get that up and running, so. Having the same vendor for the doors and the cameras and closing is one single point of failure and one person for me to contact. And I I think it'd be a good idea to have more coverage as well.
Great. So this this request is above and beyond what we've already committed?
Yes, sir. This this is in addition to the money.
Are we gonna spend all that eight hundred and fifty? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
One more eight five. Um we will spend the entirety of it and some extra will come out of my budget already.
Yeah, that was my question.
So where are we at? Where are we at right now, Jake, in terms of expenditures?
I don't know the exact number of what we've spent to date. Do you, did we give that to you the other day, Chris? Where are we?
Well, I just meant of our total.
What do we have? It's uncommitted.
Well, we've received half of our allotment. Um I don't know exactly how much of that we spent. We spent half of the original three million. Did we run that the other day? Is that what you're asking? How much dollars we've actually expended?
Yeah, what's 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 left?
Well, we haven't spent anything on conservation, to my knowledge. Steve's here. Chris has been working on the facilities aspect. Obviously, the employee bonus part is gone. And um Tyler's pursuing the fuel um stuff, but I don't know if there are any actual dollars that have been spent yet. But what's in front of you has been what's what's been committed.
Right.
On draft two of the ARPA funds, is is that the undes, the balance of the undesigned funds, is that a somewhat accurate number?
This is was updated after your last.
The five forty five?
Yeah, including the last resolution that you approved.
And and we don't have any date on the receipt of the second.
We do not, that I'm aware of. Tyler and I were looking for that the other day. We ran across him in, I think it was League of Cities, a potential May, May of twenty two date, but that's what I recall. No, nothing additional.
I think last time they just dropped it in. We didn't, you know, it was kind of like, we knew roughly.
It was supposed to be a year after the first.
Yeah.
A lot of it. If it does help your decision today, the LEC injunction made the two estimates or final contracts are sitting on my desk for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand versus the three fourteen that's shown there.
Okay.
Little bit of savings there, okay.
I I I think it's a good idea, Reed, the the here's where I'm at with it. You know, we've had this, we've had discussions previous on how was how we want to spend this money. I have some concerns, I don't have any, I don't really have concerns. I'm just curious on where we're gonna get the money. I know we've told Chris that, you know, we want it, we want to upgrade facilities here. You know, I'm curious, you know, where that money's coming from. Because I'd like to, you know, I thought if I, when we first talked about this, we talked about committing some of this ARPA money for that. I don't, we haven't got to that point yet, but I want to make sure that, because we have to replace some some storage we lost off of the courthouse square. I, don't get me wrong, I'm not against what you're proposing.
Totally understand.
I just want to make sure the funds are able to do stuff that we've talked about earlier beside what we add on to it, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And I I probably probably have those funds. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think the other the other piece that you said this is in part a result of contract inmates, correct? So do we have any idea what the offset will be? What so what do we receive from these other places? So my 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 bent is always, everybody thinks we make money on doing these kinds of things. Well, it's clear we have to spend money to get contract folks from other places that we receive a certain dollar amount for. We don't really make money. We we end up spending money to to have more inmates. Any ideas what that'll look like in terms of the receipts?
Yeah, so I do the billing right now. If you want to give me, or if you want me to give you rough figures, essentially take, we could just figure it out this way easy, take ten inmates times thirty days, so that's three hundred roughly, times sixty, and that's what you're making a month. Just pretend that we're holding uh about twenty inmates right now, or twenty two inmates for other counties' contracts. So that's monthly what we're making.
So monthly, so let's run.
Eighteen thousand.
What's that?
Eighteen thousand.
About eighteen, I suppose, okay.
And and you're absolutely right. I mean, you have, we we haven't done staff changes, so my staff, they do a really good job for what they have. We're running the same staff now, um with adding this many people on that we were before we even did contract, and they do great. But there's medical, transports, we require the the other counties to do transports, so for court, for medical appointments, stuff like that, we also have them reimburse us for medical. So we're out our time on that, but we're not out dollars, if you want, sir.
Sure, sure. Any uh any desire to uh put the money back after we allot it? Uh to Steve's point, we've we've got five hundred and forty five thousand left or that we have not allocated. We know we're going to have, I mean, we're gonna have some projects run under or some of those allotments run under. We're gonna have some of those run over.
Mr. Randy, the other county inmates, um where do those funds go?
Um sixty forty split. So it's sixty to courthouse security and forty to the general fund.
So you're you're getting forty percent of it back directly into the general fund and then the sixty goes um to courthouse security. So my thought on the giving it back is we're, you're already getting forty percent of it back right away, um and the sixty.
I want it all.
I, don't we all, sir?
But those contracts, Reed, are are we're not we're are we not, we're not dependent on those, but aren't with the new law enforcement centers going in these other counties, is that gonna affect some of these contracts?
So currently, we're holding for Polk to offset that. I've I added on top of what we were holding already for Warren, um we took another ten initially, now it's eight from Polk County to already offset that. Um so we have, there are other things I'm pursuing as well besides Polk County to generate some additional income. In my my opinion, mine alone, it's not the purpose of a jail to uh to generate income and most of them often don't, but we have the facility. I don't know if it's just well behaved citizens in Marion County or what, but we have the space right now to hold those contract inmates, um because there aren't a lot of Marion County folks getting getting arrested. Um they are, but they're getting out, you know, suspended. So we have that space, we have the capability. If it benefits the county and we can get that for you, we'll do that for you, is my thought on that, sir.
If sixty percent goes to the courthouse security, where did, I mean, is there funds in that that could pay for this, just out of curiosity?
Courthouse Security Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Courthouse Security Fund does have funds in it.
The courthouse security funds have to be used on courthouse security, though. But if I could uh speak to the technical side of things, the the cameras and the camera system that's in there right now is aging as well, so um I think this is an opportunity to um alleviate some some potential general fund expenses in the future. Because it's gonna need to be replaced here in the next year or two anyway. This this uh camera system is is aging, just like the courthouse camera system was aging too, and we've we've taken some advantages uh with with the security funds that you guys allocated through ARPA um as well for replacing some of those. So there might be some courthouse security funds that could offset that project.
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, obviously it would fit, I mean courthouse security to me also involves our LEC. I mean, I guess I don't, does there de- defined, I mean, a definition?
It's a separate, it's a code.
Oh, it's a code, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Reed.
Yes, sir.
Reed. Don't call me sir.
I can't help it.
What do you want to be called?
Oh, I can't say.
Call whatever you want. Builder's choice.
You call me anything you want, Derek, I don't care, man. This upgrade would would take some load off of of personnel, though, correct? That I, yeah, I think I heard you say that earlier, that maybe wouldn't require additional personnel.
Yeah, and and it also makes you feel better or sleep better at night about, you know, allocating the money. Having the same person is infinitely easier for me to go to when I have a problem. Um lifetime warranty on it provides us the extra parts for it. Also, he's gonna eliminate that trip cost for them to come up, so when they come up and do the doors, they would do the cameras at that time. So anybody I get's gonna charge me for coming up here and doing the cameras, this takes that trip trip charge out of that. So it's lower than I would have expected.
The the only thing like, I think that Mark, Mark had alluded to that, we don't have that second half actually in the bank, so that might be a problem getting with getting if they're there already, you know, I I don't know.
So Tyler, you you said you saved how much? About a about a hundred?
No, sixty four.
Yeah, six.
Sixty four, yeah.
About sixty four.
Rats, I thought it would be a hundred.
I I I don't have an issue with it at all.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I I think it's a good idea, but I also, like I said, I I want to make sure that some people we've committed to earlier that we we honor that commitment also.
Yeah.
And and to speak to that, Steve, I really appreciate you bringing that up, um and we've already had a conversation about this. I've drastically cut back the storage needs. We're gonna go with a little far less footprint out here um just for seeing the future and knowing that there's some other projects. I I've been aware of this project for the last, what? I, I've been aware of this project for the last, what, forty-five days? Full support of it. Um, we've already spent a tremendous amount of money bringing that building into a place where we can be confident for the next fifteen to twenty years, at least from a facility standpoint. I know cameras aren't going to ever last us fifteen to twenty years. But these are, I, I think now's the time to make those necessary upgrades in consideration with everything else we've done. We had originally talked about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars out here for upgrade, and that was taken into consideration last year, the price of that building selling uh, on the east side of the courthouse. That money would go towards it. I think we're now in the hundred to a hundred and twenty-five range, and we've cut things in half out here. To, to help offset some of this other stuff. So I, I think we take full advantage while we can. Um, and I try to deal with a single vendor on almost everything. I totally understand that that saves a lot of time. Um, but no, I, I think we're already offsetting some of these costs with what our needs are going to be out here to help make something like this happen.
I appreciate that, Chris. Thank you. Yeah, I don't have, kind of putting you through your, uh, paces here, but.
I need it, it's okay.
That's good. That's good, you're doing good. You're doing good.
They're doing good for.
You're hanging in there. All right, yeah, I don't have an issue. Yeah, Jake?
You'd asked about a cash flow, um, a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
So good folks at the courthouse have been sending me messages and we received three point two million and we have spent one million and forty-five thousand to date. And with multiple ongoing projects. So I mean, some of those aren't completed by stretch. I mean, as you, we are committed more than we've received. We talked about that the last time we looked at this, so. You know, well, again, just to.
So if we, if we, if we agree to that, can, that some of this money that, that we have in the bank was per se called that, and we don't have some of these projects complete, can we shift that around to, to do if, if somebody is there, what, that day?
I, I think the answer is yes. I think Steve Edwards's projects have a longer time horizon. So, so I think we do have some room to shift those dollars around a little bit. If we think this is worth putting ARPA money, we do get forty percent of that back.
I, I thought it was fifty.
No, he said forty.
It's in Iowa code.
I wanted all of it. But, uh, but we'll get some of those dollars back. We'll save some money. I mean, again, there'll be some, some, uh, juggling of funds as, as things come in.
Well, if we, if we have to meet the moment, that's what I'm asking, can we do that?
And I think the answer, I think the answer is yes.
I feel like, I feel like the answer to that is yes, and Chris is, is the key to that, because.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so I could tell you right now, we get a hundred percent, and I could tell you, um, part of that one point eight five billion for the three buildings, facility upgrades was parking lot of public health. That parking lot will not even begin to get touched until post-nationals, if we're lucky. I'm still compiling bids on that and talking to contractors that have been willing to give me a bid on it. We're, we're talking sometime early fall before that project would even go forward. So those funds are already spoken for. They won't be spent till towards the end of the year. That itself would cover that, cover that three times.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I just want, I don't want to promise more than what we got.
Yeah, biggest issue here is this is not a large dollar amount.
Right.
Because what's, what we're waiting for is the second tranche that we don't have. And so that's out of our control. So.
I'm, I'm supportive of it. It's just I want to make sure that everything we promised previously gets done also.
I understand, and we are getting these doors done here, what, oh, in the next two months? So that would, if that impacts your decision on it at all, it is, you know, next sixty days, we're getting those doors in. And that being when they would be able to do the cameras as well if that gets approved.
Thanks, Reed, appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Is there a motion on this request?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I make motion to approve, um, the ARPA funds request for the LEC security upgrade.
Jake, you look like you get it.
Before you, I was just going to suggest or ask that it is really nice to have the resolutions stating what you're doing. If we could, you can, you can make consensus today, but if I can bring you back.
Well, I thought we just passed a resolution saying we could do whatever we want.
You can, but it really helps us here.
Oh, so I start to do it?
Yes, sir.
God.
I'm just requesting it.
Well, so we won't do anything. Sorry.
I shot that out.
Welcome to go.
So we will, uh, close discussion, and you'll bring a resolution next time.
I appreciate that.
I'll make that motion to close discussion pending a, a, a resolution.
Okay.
Second?
Got me all messed up now.
It's all good.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Thank you.
Steve, you look confused.
I, it's all confusing. It's just so simple, just to do things like we should do.
Remember that on this next one.
So, so we're not approving anything, Kim?
We're just talking about it.
Apparently, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, we'll use that.
Kim, what do you want? You want some radios?
For some emergency response radios.
We're getting.
To be shared with.
Punchy and it's late, and I want more coffee.
What's that?
It's punchy, it's late, and I want more coffee. All right.
Oh, um, you, uh, I, I submitted a request for a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds to allocate for emergency response radios. We had, um, I had submitted this like as, when we were going through the suggestions like a long time ago, and Jeff and I just kind of talked about it and decided it made a whole lot of sense for us to work together on this, because he needs radios, we need radios, he's got expertise, I don't. We, I just know that when we need them, we need them. And so, um, I am requesting that, um, we, that we ask for ARPA funds to get a hundred thousand dollars of radios, and we would have one of the radios reside at public health, the rest of them would reside at the EMA office, and then we would check them out as needed for training and, and for exercise and use and that kind of thing.
So, so Kim, we've had a lot of discussions on radios in our nine-one-one board meetings? Correct, Emily?
Correct.
Okay. Are these the same kind of radios?
They're, they're, I, I don't know. They, um, I really, really wish Jeff was here. That gets back to the why we're working with the EMA office, because he's got the expertise. We just know how to push the buttons and talk what we need to.
Okay.
I know, that's.
So, so.
Emily, can you help me?
Well, how about the need? All right, so the need for the radios for public health, just in a nutshell, why, why extra radios?
Well, the radios that we have no longer, uh, work with the new system.
Okay, so this is just a functionality issue?
It's a functionality issue.
The technology needs to be updated, okay?
Yeah.
Kind of similar to our nine-one-one questions as well.
Correct.
Okay.
How long does, do these radios last? Do we have any idea? Right?
Your missing radios are what, ten, twelve years old, Kim?
She's had those for a very long time.
Yeah, long, long time.
And radios are just like computers, they need updates.
Right. I just wondered when the state's going to update, and then we're all like, oh.
They already did that.
Steve, can I do it for a second? We've been on ours, the Harris's, which I think is what you guys are looking at, uh, the, the Harris's. And then yours would be also able to be hooked onto a cell phone network. So we just got hooked up with FirstNet, so they could be hooked onto something like that. Ours have been good for us for, what, we had a full of five years? Five years, and I don't see them going anywhere in the near future. So it's mainly that, um, everything is switching from analog to digital, and you guys don't have the capability to go to digital is what I'm understanding.
Thank you.
So on that note, uh, Sheriff's at Civil School is part of his ISSDA board duties. He had just asked and recommended that we keep the radios at the sheriff's office, because we already have ours there. Um, our dispatchers are the ones that, uh, do the radio traffic, um, and we have some expertise on that. And then also with being able to hook them up to cell phone traffic, that we could swap them out for ours if we needed to. So he just wanted me to mention that at the meeting, and I believe the story is not in support of that. If that's accurate.
That is accurate.
Well, Kim, he just helped you out.
I know, and I appreciate that, but, but, um, this, these are separate radios from what the sheriff's department uses. This is, uh, a request from, from EMA and us, and if the sheriff's department needs additional radios, I think they should request them. Because it's.
That's a, that's a, that's a different topic in a different board meeting. That's nine-one-one.
Well, and I understand that they already.
We are going through that right now, yeah.
For radios through that nine-one-one board or through the commissioner, some of that.
Yes, that is correct.
But, um, we, you know, in an emergency, have public health emergency, however, uh, Jeff would use the public health department and others. I think it's important for these radios to be all in one place and not, um, not at, that, that they are actually available to us when we need them. And I don't have confidence that, that the radios would be accessible to us in a if there's a, if there's a large number of radios needed.
Jeff is online.
Yeah, well, as far as location, all due respect to everybody, it doesn't, these need to be at public health.
I do not want them at public health. I want them in the EMA office.
Well, wherever, wherever they're, they seem most appropriate. I'm, I'm fine with that. But I think the question is for us to spend a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, like we've been talking about, we don't have our sheet up there now.
Uncle, I'll go on.
I, I, I've always looked at it this way, Kim, you know, with Jeff, and I've had the same conversation with Jason. You guys are all the rate, I mean, the expertise in making the case for why technology has to be updated. We can intuitively know, Steve probably has more experience with this stuff than, than anybody up here, but technology changes, and you need to upgrade, and if these radios are fifteen years old, it just, even I know, that probably needs to be upgraded from, from that standpoint. And knowing what we had to go through with COVID and everything else, we had people out in the field a lot for that. So we need to be ready for those types of situations. So I don't have an issue with that. The question is, for me, it's spending a hundred thousand dollars. And.
Jeff, Jeff is on now, so Jeff, if you've got anything to say, I'm willing to have you help here.
Because what are the radios costing now?
Do you have any questions for me? Sorry, I just got on.
Yeah, how much do radios cost?
The higher end radio is about five grand, the lower one that we would be buying a bigger quantity of are around three thousand. So we would have a small number of the five thousand dollar radio and a larger number of the three thousand dollar radio.
How many?
Well, that depends on the pricing that we're able to secure. Um, Kim and I will sit down and break out how many of the, the, so the higher end radio would be for like a group leader, if Kim splits up her staff into groups, response groups. So the, the team leaders per se would have the higher end radio. And the people working in those groups would have the, the lower cost radio. And we will sit down and once we know a price, an exact price on those radios, because it is changing. Frequent, those costs are changing frequently now. Um, so once we get a, a big quote, Kim and I will sit down and split out and figure out how many of each she would like to have in the, in the cash.
So it's, it's a matter of, of, we both, both departments need the radios. But he's, you know, EMA has the expertise, so we would, we, that's why.
Sorry, Kim, it's a matter of what?
It's, it's a, it's a matter of both, both departments need the radios. But we early on decided to work together on this, because public health does not have the expertise, um, for, for this to manage it, but EMA does. We work together so frequently and, and so closely that, uh, we're, I, I have confidence that, that we can work together on this.
Well, I, I personally don't have a problem with it. I mean, it was, it was in the original allocations, I believe. With the request when we were talking about ARPA funds. And I also agree with Mark. I mean, I don't care where they're stored, but if you guys, if you guys are making a request, then I think you guys ought to store them.
And I would like to just make one comment. When we have them here.
Well, if I can, I, I don't know if it's been stated already, but these, this is not a new capability. We have a cache of twenty plus VHF radios. But Kim's primary means of communication with the state is now on the seven hundred system. So our existing radios are not going to perform there. So we're simply trying to replace something that we already have and is already usable resource, but as you stated a little bit ago, that technology is changing. The state has changed the platforms with which both the EMA office and public health communicate with the state partners, so we don't have a lot of choice in this.
Hey, Jeff, it's Reed. Have you guys looked into the Tates versus the Harris's? I think they're about a third of the cost.
Yes, that's actually what we'll be buying is, we'll be buying a smaller number of the Harris's and a larger number of the Tates. Those would be about the three thousand dollar price tag.
So, Steve? No issues?
No, I have no issue.
All right. Keisha?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
I think Jake will have a resolution in the next meeting.
We'll prepare that. And would that be tied to the, what's on item number two on the draft? Is, is that basically the same thing?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Right, yeah, like I said, it was originally.
Right.
So that doesn't change anything on the, on. We'll add, we'll add, we'll add Reed's, um, resolution.
Yeah, Reed's will be in, Reed's will be in.
Which will reduce the undesigned fund amount, but that's the only one. This will not change that.
That is correct.
So we'll just present this just like this.
That is correct. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second?
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty. Iowa Department of Public Safety budget. Tyler?
So the budget submitted as part of the agenda package was, uh, is in the form of the Iowa DOT that we, for secondary roads that we must submit annually each year prior to April fifteenth. That budget is a mirror image of the county's budget just using their chart of accounts versus ours. Any questions? The dollar amounts are the same.
They're the same, yeah. I don't have any.
I don't.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-two dash forty.
Second?
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
All right, twenty, twenty-two dash forty-one. Five-year program.
Hold your applause, but I do not have a PowerPoint presentation.
Wow, that's probably the highlight of this meeting, Tyler, right there. That might be the headline that Steve puts out. I can see it now. All right.
So what was, what I have submitted to you is a stripped down version of my five-year program from what you would normally see because of inflation and let's say a stagnant or reduction in the amount of funding, even though we have the IDA bill. So, uh, the, the two major projects in our five-year program would be the T fifteen Flagler Bridge. This project is now federalized. I believe I've already communicated that to you. What that means is we're now looking at nearly one point seven million dollars out of the farm and market account that we had not planned on. That is partly due to inflation of construction costs, but also because we have to provide a twenty percent match for the federally from farm and market or our secondary road budget. The second large project would be following up after the T fifteen Flagler Bridge is complete to do pavement rehabilitation on the corridor between Knoxville and Pella. It is our third oldest overlay in the county. It is showing some ages in certain sections. It's also our highest of volume county road, a paved road. Uh, so through our prioritization, it was already next on the list. We just wanted to make sure that project was following, uh, the Flagler Bridge. One other major change in the five-year program, and after that, I stripped everything else out because we are in the red in our, basically in all funding sources at that point, we are borrowed ahead to the max extent possible in our highway bridge program, which is with the federal aid bridge money. We are borrowed ahead in farm-to-market to the max extent possible, which used to be five years, but it's now three, so that limits us a little bit. Um, and then one other project that I added to the five-year program would be Highway G seventy-one, so this would be the highway from, goes into Bussy from Highway five, from the Bussy stub near the four homes and the gathering grounds into Bussy. This was overlaid with, it was a thin lift overlay as part of the stimulus from the two thousand nine timeframe. Um, a thin lift is a, like three quarters of an inch to an inch, so the life of that overlay is significantly reduced compared to the overlays that we typically perform in the three to four inch range, or two and a half to four inch range, so that, we went and analyzed all the overlays that we had planned to do, which is about twenty million dollars worth in the next five to ten years, and this was the worst pavement that we had, um, so I went ahead and moved it up. Other considerations, rather than doing that, were to do thin lift overlays on a number of highways. But the cost of that alone was twice as much as just taking care of this one paved road that was in the worst condition. So, uh, that, that is where I landed. Upon completion of G seventy-one, we will then be borrowed ahead to the max extent possible on our federal road funding. So, a couple of quick numbers to give you and then I'll open it up for questions. So when I started here, I started in two thousand thirteen and the budget year we were in at that time was for FY fifteen. Our annual allocation of federal bridge money was three hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. This year, two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Now, part of that is our fault because we have made, uh, significant strides in replacing bridges. We've reduced the number of bridges in Marion County by putting culverts in versus bridges, which don't classify as a bridge any longer. We've also just replaced bridges, so we've made significant strides in that regard. Also, between FY nineteen and FY twenty, the Federal Highway Administration changed from a sufficiency rating to a good, fair, poor rating, at which point we lost about twenty percent of our bridges on that list, so the numbers you see in the headlines about deficient bridges, our number got reduced, the number of bridges we had on that list, which then in turn reduced our share of the, of the allocation. So, um, the other thing, so now that we have a reduced amount of funding allocation per year, we also have, every bridge is now federalized. On-system bridges, so this would be bridges on a federally route, have to be matched at twenty percent, so any bridge we do, we're now using farm-to-market or local dollars to match with. So it now impacts those and the federal, federalization increases the construction cost. Off-system bridges, now this is an advantage to us. Uh, off-system bridges are a hundred percent federally funded, which is a change from previous to twenty fifteen when we, when the swap came into play. Uh, it used to be all bridges had to require a match. In our federal road funding, so this is what they call the STBG, this is what you're seeing in the headlines, is IAJA, or IAJA is, it is increasing, STBG, but the allocation down to the locals is actually very insignificant as far as the amount of increase. So in, in twenty fifteen, my first year here, we were four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars annually. Today, four hundred and thirty-one thousand annually, no change. That is including the four percent increase that we're getting, so sixteen thousand dollars as part of IAJA. The reason we did not get the twenty-eight to thirty percent that, uh, that we had originally, uh, heard about was because of a comment that I think Andrew Collins and I mentioned a number of meetings ago, uh, there was a supplement to STBG from TAP, so there was a TAP flex, and, and Steve and I sat in a meeting last week or the week before about this. The TAP flex, as part of the previous federal transportation bill, was allowed to supplement STBG. That was taken away and I asked the question, was that taken away intentionally? And they said yes. So as part of the new transportation bill, there's a lot of emphasis on green, uh, alternative transportation and that sort of thing. TAP is Transportation Alternatives Program. So they wanted to fund that versus, uh, allowing the supplement to come out of TAP flex, so, uh, so the TAP dollars at our RPA, so in central Iowa, there's gonna be nearly double the amount of TAP dollars available, so Steve Edwards will be happy. Um, but we only saw a four percent increase in our road funding as a, as a result. And STBG all now requires a match also. So in the five-year program, you'll see that our farm-to-market account from last year to this year took about a one point eight million dollar hit from the Flagler Bridge, but an additional two million dollar hit matching all the other bridges and road projects that we have at STBG and HBB. So, uh, you know, I had no intent on maxing out our farm-to-market, but to keep on schedule and not have further deterioration on our most dire pavements and, and road segments, that's what we had to do this year. Uh, I will say there is talk of a farm-to-market supplement. As part of IAJA, they think they can swap some dollars and supplement farm-to-market for the match portions of these projects, but we have no idea what that dollar amount is. Also on HBP, I asked the DOT what to program for future allocations. We expected to see an increase there as well, and they said none, that's all, that all went into competitive sources as far as I know. So yesterday I got an email from the DOT, cause I followed up.
He's bright news sometimes.
So yesterday I followed up with the DOT on, you know, what, what's the most realistic thing for a county to apply for out of IAJA? Because the majority of that is competitive funding sources. And everything I was seeing requires a one hundred million dollar minimum project to apply. The most, the answer I got was, let's bundle some bridges, cross all the counties in the state and apply, which the state has done before for counties. Typically, our bridges are not gonna be eligible. We don't have big enough, long enough, or poor enough condition ratings to justify, you know, we don't make the cut. There are worse bridges within the state around other counties. So that competitive source did go from two million to ten million, but last year I can tell you there were eight million dollars worth of applications. And we don't make the initial cut to be in that, considered in that eight million. And the other thing is the surface transportation grant, which is a twenty-five million dollar minimum application, at which point I would probably have to spend about three hundred thousand dollars to do environmental studies just to apply based on my research, so.
He's crazy.
That's the, that's the good news, I guess. It's been very frustrating, three or four weeks here, I can tell you that, I, it's, it's discouraging, um, you know, I had, I felt like Jay and I put together a really comprehensive program two or three years ago, we had swap come on board, we had the fuel tax increase, things were looking really good and, and now we've taken about, um, a decade step backwards, so. I mean, that's probably not even true, it's probably further than that if I look back.
So this, uh, this switch to, um, environmentally friendly funding. Is that a trend we need to start factoring in, are they gonna take more money away from like real roads and put it into, you know, public transportation for cities and how many charging stations are we gonna get?
I know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff in there about that, mass transit, electric charging. Now, we were.
We're not, we're not on that list, I'll bet.
We're not on that.
This is Tyler, what you're, what you're hearing and for our media and for any of the public that might listen to this. This is why you need to vote at the state level and the federal level. Because what you just heard from our county engineer in terms of putting this alphabet soup together of grants, that's your money, that's your tax money. And he's having to go with hat in hand to the federal government while they reallocate it to priorities that have no bearing or relationship on our life here in Marion County. And our funding stream has gone back a decade to what it was. I'm not trying to be too political here, Tyler, but the, the fact that we can't get access to the funds to fix our roads with your tax money, cause it's gonna go to some green energy project or some. I was gonna.
Well, and the trouble with that, like Tyler alluded to, when we have to federalize those projects, the costs increase significantly.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, think about this, think about how many people are just employed by the federal government to run these grants. The administrative overhead alone. Instead of going to pavement, it's paying people to determine who gets money, who qualifies. It's ridiculous at every level.
Oftentimes, it's the larger cities, the, you know, that are gonna get this funding, that's, it's, we see it in everything, that we do it, yep.
In this, in this current environment, it's all political, it's all done politically.
It is possible that we could do a twenty-five million dollar grant, I mean, I could come up with that. Uh, what, I talked to the, our, our RPA about that, it would have to be considered a regionally significant project, which likely means, uh, we'd have to tie in some other jurisdictions, counties within our RPA. But at that point, you know, I, I have some heartburn with that because we would essentially be making up a project and that's not where our needs are.
I mean, yeah, the money wouldn't go to where we actually need the dollars.
No.
So yeah, we get a grant, we can do a twenty-five million dollar project, then you can build a road to nowhere like they do in other places. Um, and we don't do that, we actually use the money for what it's supposed to be used for, so.
On, on a side note, I am, these are not shown in the five-year program, I am applying for three grants this week. Uh, the Miller Meeks Community Project Fund, which is a, for the overlay of Highway G twenty-eight, which we're patching this summer. And then a couple of other smaller grants for, for potential road improvement projects. But, uh, talking with RPA, we do not actually have to program those, even though some of these are federal dollars, we do not have to program them as part of the STIP, we can do that as a later date once the grants are awarded. Which is also a change for the good, so that's, that is a positive. We used to have to program them, which meant you couldn't program the projects you had actually planned on doing and had money for. You had to program these ghost funds. So that is a plus for us.
Tyler, can I hear you say Miller Meeks Grant Fund?
Yeah, so there, I think the unofficial term was there were some earmarked funds as part of a, the proposed transportation bill. Um, but it's called the Community Project Fund, so each district gets up to fifteen projects uh, varying in size that they can request funds for. We applied last year and did not receive any funds, I don't believe any of her district funded projects were awarded uh, based on her staff's email to me last year. So all the districts in the state are.
Again, though, you're, you're, I mean, I commend you for looking and trying to find this because it's like, we're trying to shoot a hoop here and hoop here and hoop here, just trying to get funding so that, you know, we can have stability in our roads, but as you all know, that we haven't even, that's just to be able to maintain, we're, we're gonna struggle in the next years to maintain.
So Tyler, what do you need from us on this?
I, I just need approval of the five-year program, this five-year program was put together with everything just stated in mind.
And just as a closing thought, uh, how are you and Lindsay coming with the, uh?
I, I gotta be honest, Mark, uh, this five-year program, the LDGA grant and all these other grants that have deadlines on April fifteenth have consumed most of my time the last three weeks, so.
All right. Fair enough.
I won't follow up with you, after the next couple of weeks I will.
All right, very good, fair enough. Very good, thank you, Tyler, is there a motion on this resolution?
Yeah, make motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-two dash forty-one.
Second.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Very good, so, thank you. The audit, Jake.
So I don't have a PowerPoint either and.
Wow.
This is much more basic, we are pleased to finalize FY twenty-one, it feels like that was a long time ago. Um, audit was completed, nothing major reportable, it was really good, I really wanna thank all the departments for just being fantastic uh, during the, it's a year-long process and when the auditors come in and test and do all those things, provide information. Uh, we filed on deadline by March thirty-one, it has been submitted, uh, to Emma, uh, for continuing disclosure for our bonds, um, same day. DA Davidson helps us with that, so we have confirmation that we filed and followed up on our continuing disclosures. Associates filed and we, um, approved through the federal clearinghouse and we have filed with the secretary, or auditor state, as Keisha noted earlier, so. Um, it's a receive and file, uh, we can move forward, um, we're already doing fieldwork in FY twenty-two, so.
And no material?
Nothing material, I mean, there's always some comments and they're addressed, um, but nothing, like they just walk out and say, hey, I mean, like, great job, so.
That's good.
And that's not, that's just reflective on everybody.
That's very good.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate that, thanks for pointing that out, Jake. So we have a receive and file, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we, receive and file FY twenty-one Marion County Audit.
A second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Very good, Mr. Nestebie, BA, project update. Unlucky, shock, we're tearing it down.
Tyler and Jake, I actually do have about an hour-long presentation with a PowerPoint, so strap yourselves in. I am kidding, by the way. So no, things are, things are progressing well, um, our mystery tunnel, our surprise massive tunnel will actually be finalized for a removal since today. Uh, we will then ship resources to the south side, uh, the reason south side work started and then stopped is, I think most of you are aware, we did find some hidden asbestos wrapped pipe in between three layers of brick, um, in three of the buildings. So we had to go ahead and get a rapid test done and then line up abatement of that, uh, that's all been completed. So as of hopefully late afternoon or tomorrow morning, we will commence with removing the rest of the buildings on the south side, which will go down quickly. For the public's sake, I did have a lot of phone calls, I mean a lot of phone calls over the last week, so I'd like to address two things publicly. Number one, the giant rock pile that is county property, property cannot be sold to the public. A lot of phone calls about people wanting to come get truckloads or see if Tyler would organize a, a dump truck to deliver to their house. Uh, we, we cannot do that, um, it's not, not even a question, um, with the way the statute reads in regards to county government. Number two, I'd like to remind the, the public again, that once we sign the contract with Vite, buildings, uh, anything salvageable belongs to Vite. So, um, lots of conversation pieces about, well, it's a shame, we didn't know those buildings were coming down, uh, which is a little bit of a surprise to me, um, people want artifacts from them, pieces of them. Uh, that is no longer county property, uh, and again, even if it was, our ability to just pick and choose quote-unquote winners and losers is extremely limited by the law, so we cannot just allow you to come on and, and take pieces, um. I understand that it's a, can be heart-wrenching for some people to watch those buildings disappear, but that is the decision that's been made and it is completely out of our hands at this point. Uh, because we are not going to pay the contractual fee we have with Vite, um, and people need to understand that as well. For us to tell them to save a building, we are contractually obligated to pay them dollars. Uh, we're not going to pay them dollars, uh, and leave a building standing. So other than that, things have been going very well, I look forward to those buildings being down within the week. Um, we're just about done with the abatement process of the, uh, chiller plant and boiler plant. Uh, those will be the two remainder buildings, which are technically adjoined, they will be gone hopefully here in the next twenty-five to thirty days as well, which then means all demolition, demolition on the premises is gone. Uh, from that point on, April. From that point on, April eleventh, which has come and gone, was actually the official start date of the dirt work. So if you see a lot of bulldozers and things working out there, that is them actually putting grade back where it needs to be. We've got proctor tests going on, layered compaction. We've already got a signed contract with Team Services to do that. So I'm getting compaction reports that we can file for future development to ensure that any future developer comes in there, that we did things by the book as far as putting the dirt back in a way that is buildable. We're also, I reached out to the city. They've got Snyder and Associates working tentatively on some grade plans for development. We're actually going to, I put those two in the same room, so Snyder and Vite. So we didn't have to worry about tax dollars being spent twice to regrade something since we're already paying to have it graded within our original scope of work. So that's being taken care of right now as well. So all, all in all, things are going really well. I'm really looking forward to this project being over. Because I am taking about a year vacation, maybe two, maybe indefinitely. I haven't made my mind up yet. I'm just kidding. But no, things are going really, really well. Any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
No, I'm just wondering about the, Lisa, what kind of vacation plan are we giving? Okay, alright. Evidently, that's. Evidently, that's been tweaked a little bit. Alright, no, Chris, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate the update. Motion to close discussion.
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Alright, updates. Mr. McCombs?
I think Tyler and I got a meeting in Albea Friday, and we're gonna, we're gonna find out what's happening with the Cedar Creek watershed. What's that?
The possibly the fate of that.
He said possibly the fate of that.
Yeah, possibly the fate, yes. Wasn't Friday a holiday? No, you already got enough.
County proclamation number?
Friday is currently not a Marion County holiday. We will be open on Friday.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Steve, anything else?
No, I have to.
Alright, sir, thank you. I'm just gonna follow up, you did. This is John.
We did get that email, what I spoke about communications and regarding Impact. They had been here at the, let's see, February meeting, February eighth roughly in there, and asking for some funding of seventeen hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And that funding was going to be matched with the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. They've come back and said that they've decided to opt out of that. They were awarded, but determined that due to the increase and what it was gonna cost administration burden to the program. So whether we want to do anything different with that, you know, if we wanna opt out of not doing the seventeen thirty-nine, or if we would like to give that to them. I will tell you, Impact, I am on that board, I'm the representative. Year-to-date, they've had twenty-nine million dollars in revenue, and a lot of it's coming from ARPA. Twenty million from Polk. So I don't know that the seventeen hundred dollars is really going to make a huge difference. I would say, I struggle with it not knowing where it would go. Meaning like, okay, we can designate to Marion County, but what's it going to be for, for Marion County?
Jake.
So I think I was, I, I looked into that, that motion and that grant, just as a follow-up, because I couldn't remember. And I believe that that motion to do that was contingent upon them getting the grant. So at this point, you guys are.
At this point, we're not obligated. No, I appreciate that, Jake. Thank you.
And I'm fine with that, too.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Very good. Alright. I don't have anything. And I don't have a PowerPoint. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
You are adjourned, thank you.